But, you know, also too, like I said, we're gonna do theirs early, so we're gonna try to get, so people wanna go to the county meeting. They can, if they're here for the county. So if you wanna make mention, um, we're gonna keep this moving because we have a public hearing on the county afterwards and anybody that wants to leave.
Now, this is third time. Hope it's my last time.
And the law services? There should be an briefing. I, you're gonna have to ask Eric, I give him mixed up. That's a question for Eric.
Are you talking about the two different lead, are they talking about the two different lead projects?
There, question, what's, yeah, maybe you wanna ask me to answer that right now.
Good evening. I'd like to call the city council meeting of May sixth, twenty twenty-five to order. We'll start with a pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We move to making a motion for approving the agenda. Motion been made and seconded. Any further discussion? I do have a, um, motion to amend the agenda. I would like to move the, uh, number ten mayor's comments in open form to four A proceeding the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to move the mayor's comments in open form to four A from number ten on tonight's agenda. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Looking for a motion for consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We're gonna move to then the mayor's comments in open form. From what I could tell, we had one person signed up. Uh, Deb, I'll invite you to the podium. Uh, please limit your, uh, discussion to three minutes per, uh, topic. I do wanna, uh, respect the folks that are here as time that may be trying to get to the county's, um, hearing. Uh, that takes place at six PM tonight. Uh, so Deb, please state your name, uh, address, and you have the floor.
Uh, Deb Olson, six hundred Dewey Street. First of all, I want to thank our mayor, Brandon White, for excusing himself from voting on the issues in regards to the new lumberyard at last meeting. Even though he didn't personally have any stake in the company, only the bank that he works for did. In years past, our council members have behaved with what would appear as impropriety. Voting on issues benefiting family members and close friends. And so I'm here to remind you that our elected officials, you are elected to serve the interest for all of the citizens of Foley. So I would like to, also, the residents would like to know when the welcome sign, or Foley welcome signs are gonna be done. Um, second, I feel that Hans deserves an apology. Because I'm certain that, um, this annexation didn't come about just recently. I think you knew about it before last month's meeting, and I feel myself that he got targeted. Even though it was his group that buried the capsule, not within the city council, their approval. It was still their group, but I do feel that he deserves an apology. Thank you.
May I respond to that?
Sure.
Deb, the annexation was not in the planning even at that point. We brought up the lack of the time capsule going in Gilmanton Township prior to any of that action.
Uh, thank you, Deb. I will comment on the welcome sign. Uh, we are looking at, uh, May for, um, resuming, uh, construction. Uh, and, and speaking with the contractors and, uh, the, uh, the GC, uh, their hopes would be to, if they can, have it completed near, uh, Foley fund days, um, you know, weather permitting and such, but yes, construction will be resuming, uh, soon. Alright, moving on, uh, to the agenda item number five, the public hearing. We will recess the regular city council meeting at six thirty-five PM to conduct the public hearing on a conditional use permit for the operation of a drive-through on the property located at five-two-zero Dewey Street. Is there anyone else present who wishes to speak for or against this matter? Is there anyone else present who wishes to speak for or against this matter?
Yeah, we're all since six hundred Dewey Street. I live adjacent to where they're going to be building. This drive-through, if you think about it, Foley is one of the few cities that still has a DMV. They're trying to make this convenient for not only the residents, but everyone else that uses the DMV. So I am in favor of the drive-through.
I'm Evan Larson with GLT Architects, kind of representing the county since, as you may be aware, the county minister here is in their own meeting at this time, so I'm simply just noting that I'm here to answer any questions should any arise, uh, with regards to the site or property or designing the facility, so.
Thank you. Is there anyone else present who wishes to speak for or against this matter? Name and address, please.
Um, my name is Karen Campa. Um, I have a question to you guys. Is that, um, drive-through for the DMV, is that part of, uh, the building expansion? Or the part of the new building that they're putting on the government center? Is the DMV gonna be still in the same facility? Or is it in a totally different new building?
Well, if you'd like, I can, I can have you answer that question.
Because, because what I understand is, what's going on in the government center is that twenty-nine billion that they wanna spend, that's part of that project to, to make that. And I know that there's other, uh, towns, cities, or whatever, that don't have the drive-through. Um, I know a person that worked in the DMV several years ago, and that person ran that department, plus she did the tax, taxing area. Long ago, she did all of that. Um, what I'm having a problem with is, if you got, go in there and you have people sitting in there, and you're waiting with a number, and they're all looking over their little cubicles, wondering who's gonna get up to help you, who's gonna run that window? I was in that, um, office to get my license renewed, uh, back in October, to get a new driver's license. And I had papers and stuff, and, um, they said, well, what do I gotta do if this is gonna take effect May seventh? She kinda, I, I waited there, I took a number, and I had to wait probably twenty minutes.
Sure.
Nobody else, few people sitting, so I waited and waited, and I got finally called. And so she explained to me, and I said, well, what do I need? And she goes, well, you're gonna have to get a, um, a birth certificate and, and all this other stuff. And I said, well, I don't have a birth certificate. I said, my house was broke into and my safe was stolen. Well, you gotta go across the hall. So she was telling me all this, I go across the hall, and the lady explains to me, well, you don't need this, and you don't need that, and you should be... I said, well, she told me I can't renew my license unless I have a birth certificate. And the lady goes, no, she said, um, you can get your regular license, but if you're gonna fly, or you have to have a passport, or you have to have this new one by May seventh. So I go back out there, and I said to the lady, well, I said, excuse me, before she took the next person, I said, um, she told me I can get a regular license. I don't have to buy the one that I need by May seventh. And she goes, well, I can't take care of you. She said, you gotta get another number. So I sat there, two hours, and I waited, and I waited. Ladies got up, went to the bathroom, another lady got up, filled her water bottle. A guy came there and he was dinging the bell, and nobody wanted to get up to help him over by the tax area. So he comes and he sits down. It was ten to four. Three of us were sitting there. She gets up, she leans over the counter, and she goes, what did you guys need again? I said, I'm here with those papers. I'm still waiting. Guy wanted to renew his tabs, and the other guy had an issue with his property tax. She said, you all have to come back tomorrow. She's, I'm getting ready to close. The older fellow says, I have ten minutes. You have ten minutes before you close, and you can take care of all of us in that ten minutes. She goes, I'm not gonna, she goes, you come back tomorrow. So I went to St. Cloud, went to the Stearns County one, took a number the next day, 'cause I said I won't be back here. This isn't the first time this has happened, and so I got a number, and I didn't even sit down. The lady called me, and within a couple of minutes, I had my new driver's license. I came in to pay my taxes in May. And there was people standing with their numbers, people sitting, and we waited and we waited. And I dinged the bu- buzzer when it was my turn. Nobody would come up. Are you gonna get it? I got the last one. You gonna get it? I got the last one. And so I said, well, I guess nobody wants my money today. Same thing happened to the guy, that same thing in October when he came to pay his license. Same thing happened again in October when I came to pay my property taxes. I think you got too many people working in that department, too many of them sitting around and getting paid. Like I said before, you had three people in there before. And when, when Joan ran that tax thing, and she retired, another lady took over, there was three women in there. And they ran that DMV, and they did the taxes. There was no sitting around. It was boom, 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 and they waited. Now you sit there and you wait, and you wait, even if you have a number. If they don't wanna come and take you, they just sit there and wait, and they'll sit there, and they talk and talk amongst themselves, or they get up to go to the bathroom, and you gotta sit there and wait. I have a friend that's a business person, and he doesn't even come to your courthouse anymore. He goes to Malaca. And he owns a business here in town, because he gets treated like crap over there. So this money spending, and you got people that aren't gonna get up off their butts now to wait you on the counter. Who's gonna wa- manage that window? Are you gonna hire another person to sit there by the window all day, or are they gonna decide, flip coin, well, which one of us are getting up today now to take care of them? I see a problem in that department, and, um, I don't know, it's, it's a lot of money to spend for a drive-through. There's a lot of other coun- counties in Minnesota that don't have one. Morrison County is very busy up there. I know the lady that runs that, and they don't have a drive-through. They got a lot of workers sitting at the windows to help people out, so.
Good. Well, Karen, thank you.
Thanks for your time.
I, I wanna, I do want to just comment real, real quick here. Uh, no need for you to clarify. I think I can take care of this. So you're speaking to the county, uh, and the city has nothing to do with the county? Uh, the only thing that we're, uh, uh, decisioning on is if the county, if we're allowing the county to have a drive-through in a new building that they want to build. And it is separate from the city. The city has no involvement in the, the spending or the departments.
But I just, when you put that up there and you started talking about that, I thought, is that drive-through gonna be separate than the government center? The DMV gonna be separate, or why were you guys involved?
At six PM, the, uh, the county has their meeting on this very subject. I would encourage you to join them to share what you shared here, as they're the ones who are actually, I'll say, in charge of those departments and those decisions and...
Well, that's, I understa- I understand, though, and you put that up, and I thought, maybe they're gonna do a DMV separate. Maybe they're not even gonna be tied with the government anymore, and that, that's why you are talking about this.
Since they're, since they're building within the city limits, uh, we have to decision on approving their design and what they're doing, uh, as a city. But the county itself is the one who's decisioning on building it, paying for it, designing it, em- employing it. Uh, and so I, I strongly encourage you to share that information with them as well.
Okay, thanks for your time. I'm sorry I took up your time.
Nope, thank you.
If I could, ma'am, uh, your address too, for the record, could we get that?
One oh-four-seven-five Seventh Street Southeast, St. Cloud, Minnesota, five-six-three-oh-four.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else present who wishes to speak for or against this matter? Hearing none, we will reconvene the regular city council meeting at five forty-four, uh, PM. From there, is there a motion adopting resolution two zero-two-five-dash-eleven approving conditional use permit and site plan for the proposed new government center?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Uh, any further discussion?
Uh, it did go through planning commission, and it had, uh, the consensus that this was, uh, met all the properties that we, uh, needed. And they did a very good job of laying it out for us, so.
Thank you for that feedback. Uh, uh, so, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to, uh, number six, wastewater regionalization project update, Jared Bogie of Bolton and Mink.
Good evening, Mayor Council. Enclosed in your packet this evening is pay estimate number twenty-six for the project. Uh, includes all work completed through April twenty-fifth of twenty-twenty-five. Um, the pay estimate is two hundred and forty-five thousand, five hundred and forty-two dollars and twenty-two cents. With that pay estimate, represents approximately ninety-six percent of the contract completion. Um, and it is, or we're asked, or seeking council, um, approval of that, of that pay estimate.
Jared, would you help identify what items exactly, uh, this pay order is for?
Uh, it is for the retainage. So, as part of the contract, retainage is withheld from the contract.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so the amount that's being retained exceeds the amount remaining on the grass restoration, um, other punchless items, so.
Just punchless items as it, as it were?
That's what covers the retainage, and so not until the final pay estimate will all that retainage be released.
Sure.
And that's at what time, that's when the warranty starts for the project as well.
Okay. Um, and I know we are waiting on some parts and pieces, and we're gonna, we're gonna be firing up the system here, uh, soon. I'm, I'm finding it hard to continue to pay until we've rectified the situation. That's my personal opinion. Whether that's right or wrong, I guess, is, is a moot point, but that's my opinion on, on what we have being presented as far as continuing on with, um, the project as we are dwindling down from our retainage amount. Um, you know, I'd rather see that we are, uh, that we've ironed out the, you know, the troubleshooting issues. Again, I've, I've reiterated, it is a large project, so for there not to have been anything, uh, from a troubleshooting standpoint, would have been nothing short of a miracle. Uh, but I would like to see us back up and running again before I would feel comfortable, um, releasing any more of what little retainage we have left.
Mr. Mayor, I agree with that. I think there's still some things out there that, uh, we need to flow, and that, and that's scheduled. I would like to see us flowing, and with all the politics on the other end that we're facing, I'd like to have that all ironed out before we release any more retainage.
Is there, uh, do you foresee anything with us foregoing or not making a motion to, uh, pay the, the pay estimate? I know I asked you to, I told you the lawyer didn't need to be here, but...
Um, I know, I, I understand the, the frustration, you know, with, with some of the issues. Um, when's the last time we paid him? Was it three months ago, two months ago?
Uh, it was not last month or the month prior, so I believe that'd be three.
Yeah, and I think, what's the contracts say? I'd have to look back at it. We could, I'd ha- I'd have to really look at the terms and...
I mean, the other option too, certainly council has plethora of options, but the other option would be to approve a contingent on the startup and, um, then it wouldn't have to wait until June, but it...
I could, I could get on board of that.
Yeah.
Contingent upon...
Resuming.
Resuming, uh, and...
Well, this balance, is that broken down into two more payments?
Probably a couple, yeah. What, probably three more payments or so you ever take?
Yeah, I would guess so.
Yeah. You know, we have...
I guess I don't have any problem paying this, but we do have some retaining, uh, possibilities here.
Yeah, I mean, there's still seven hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Yeah, there would still be, there would still be seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, um, re- in retainage after this pay application.
Correct.
I could get on board with contingent upon restart.
I wanna clarify, after this pay estimate, there'll be a hundred and sixty-three thousand left in retainage. The project is under...
Oh, under...
Under budget.
Under budget, okay.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so I would, so I would say, uh, possibility of the contingency then, uh, I wouldn't be in favor of, of making a payment otherwise.
Do they have a definite time period in which we will be at a hundred percent?
I can go into the, uh, the update. We had a meeting, our weekly, or weekly meeting with St. Cloud, um, today. Um, moving forward on the, um, chemical delivery that's been, um, the chemical has been ordered for the resuming of pumping. Um, one of the chemical suppliers will be in, um, Friday to start setting up equipment, testing it, to make sure that it's operational when, when startup occurs. The, uh, one of the parts that we anticipated, uh, to be delivered this week and installed, that was one of the goals to move forward with, starting on Tuesday next week. Um, late this afternoon, we got an email that the ship date is May fourteenth. Um, which means that the startup targeting date, rather than the, um, thirteenth, would be the twentieth, a week from, uh, two weeks from today.
Sure. Okay, yep, can't, I mean, yeah, can't control, but we can't control, uh, but we can control our decision to make payment until we're actually started and, and resuming, and things have been ironed out, and we're back on track. Uh, so I would be okay making a motion, uh, contingent upon, uh, successful restart of the wastewater line, uh, to release pay estimate. Where's the number?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, uh, pay application number twenty-six.
If I could, Mr. Mayor, um, I, I would just like to check with the attorney on this, just to make sure, um, contractually we're okay. So if, I, I think that's, that's a fine motion, but if we do have an issue or something that we need to contractually, you know, take care of, we'll have to do that.
Yep.
So, your motion is to grant the payment contingent on flowing?
Uh, re- like, full resume of the wastewater line and flowing to St. Cloud.
Yeah, the only, the only issue I have then is what if something else comes up and we can't flow again? What, what do we do then?
Valid question, um...
Would we, would you be, would you consider holding that payment back until we're flowing problem-free?
Problem-free, how, how long? What is the anticipation, uh, once they resume what's con- currently held in the pipe to make its way to St. Cloud, and then, I'll say, sending new, um, from Foley to St. Cloud? What is that, what is the timeline of, of how fast it gets from one end to the other?
Sure, so from the time that, uh, startup occurs, we're anticipating it would be about a day and a half for the existing wastewater in the pipe to get flushed out and replaced with the new water from the ponds.
Sure. So, okay, May twentieth, when's the next meeting, June s- third? All right, two weeks, that gives us two weeks. I don't know, maybe it, maybe it is, uh, not a... I understand the legalities, I mean, we have to, we have to look into that. But it'd probably be a solid week for us to even know what the sulfide levels are. I mean, are they gonna be able to test that in the, in the moment? Uh, the, the issues that we're, we were having in the first place, as far as those, those homes that were affected?
The hydrogen sulfide, uh, levels will be monitored, hundred percent. That's, um, continuously during startup.
Yep.
But when will you, when will you know that the houses downstream are affected or not affected?
Um, so we'd be looking at two weeks until the next meeting.
Are you okay with that?
I mean, at that point, what's, what's another two weeks at that, I guess, is, is a good...
Right.
Argument to, you know, I understand that they may not like the action, but, um...
We gotta start flowing, I mean...
Yeah. I'll amend, I'll amend my motion to, uh, to be just that, um, a motion to, uh, deny, um, consideration of pay application number twenty-six, uh, until, uh, further discussion at next meeting.
We can legally do this?
That's what I wanna double check on. Um, I, I, I just, I don't know without, I gotta look at... I, I, I just, I don't know without, I gotta look at the contract. Because I know, you know, when there's so much work, you have an obligation to pay too. But you also have to have an operating system too, so I understand where the council's at.
Well, yeah, understandably, uh, you know.
Why don't we, why don't we do this, Mr. Mayor? Then why don't we table this till next month and make this payment? Can we do that until we know we're flowing? That gives us two weeks.
Would that just be to, you mean, just not, not.
Not.
Motion, just table it until next meeting?
Just table it till next month, table the payment till next month.
Does that sound better than making a motion to not pay? Or the, or the equivalent?
My, what if we have a contractual obligation to, to release funds? You know, technically, I, I'm not, can I release checks? And, you know, yes, we have to pay bills sometimes with, you know, and then they come at the council later depending on timing, but this is a substantial project, which is why you see those payoffs every month before they, they go out. So, that would be my only concern, is if we do have to pay a portion based on the work that's been done. I like the first motion better, to be honest.
To?
Just to pay when we start flowing, but. That's just my, it's up to you if I have to decide that.
I would like to see us flowing before we make any more payments.
Yeah, well, yeah, I, I think, I don't think that's gonna be, I, I think that's a.
I mean, things are gonna happen, hopefully they don't, but, you know, things might happen, but we haven't really flowed a lot yet.
Yeah.
So.
I agree a hundred percent, but I just don't want to get into a legal detriment here, doing something wrong.
Well, if we've got.
Or if our country.
Well, if, I mean, worst-case scenario, we, we find out that we can't and we have to act on it. I mean, it's, it's as simple as that, so. I like the motion of, or why even the motion, tabling until next month? As a, as a council, can we just, I mean, do we need to make a motion, I suppose, though to get everyone's?
I would motion to table.
So, motion, I'll make a motion to table the consideration of pay application until next month's June third city council meeting.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
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 I'm sorry, further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, opposed? Motion carries. Jared, is there anything else?
Unless council has questions for me?
Looking to the future a little bit.
Mm-hmm.
In your professional opinion, we should be flowing easily, you believe?
Yeah, I think once the, once the parts arrive, and those are installed, I know the contractor's on board to, as soon as they arrive, they're gonna install it immediately, so. Yeah, I mean, it's really a supplier delay is what this is. This really has nothing to do with the contractor, to be honest with you, but I understand council's actions.
Wow, I'd like to see the flow.
Yep, we all, that's our goal.
We've given plenty of money for this project and now we're getting down to the end and we have some issues that need to be taken care of. And I think they've done an excellent job, but we also have to work together, so. And they also have another project for us.
As, as a reminder, there's still a project warranty period, you know, so if something doesn't go right, there's warranty per the contract, so.
And how long is it?
Uh, two years, I believe.
Two years from the time we flow?
Until we accept the final pay estimate, which is gonna be after we start pumping again.
Understandably, we, we couldn't have foreseen high hydrogen sulfide levels or understand or know that that would have been a situation until after. You turn it on and experience it, and sort of we're rectifying it and I'm sure all will be okay in the end, but I think it's, I think it's just safe to make sure we're okay first.
Sure.
Thank you, Jared.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Moving on to number seven, discussion on Foley's one hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary. Renee K. Chuck is here to take a few minutes and comment, share.
Yeah. Do I say my name and address?
Please.
I'm Renee K. Chuck, I live at one seventy Main Street, apartment one oh two Foley, Minnesota five six three two nine. All right, I just kind of had.
You can boil it down.
Like I'm kind of short, but tall. All right, so I had, had mentioned at a different city hall meeting, because the city was wanting an event or something outside of Foley Fund Days. And so, I am the founder of Grace House Ministries, which is a baby nonprofit, so I was already tentatively planning a community event with the hopes of being able to meet the, the arts grant deadline, which I did not, so I don't know if it's attached to the thing. Yes, I see it. This outline was really just talking to being able to bring a lot of the different arts and just what we have to showcase in the Foley and surrounding area. So, looking at local bands, musicians, performers of all different kinds, bringing in the culinary arts, but then also having interactive opportunities for the community to do family art pieces or just games and activities, kind of old-school style, or however we wanted to kind of plan it. I have a small planning committee already, I'm just kind of briefly looking through the outline so we can manage time well. But August thirtieth is a Saturday, so we were kind of looking tentatively for the two to ten P.M. kind of thing at the Holdridge Park. So, right now, we haven't paid the official reservation fee yet, but we're able to do that for Grace House Ministry side. But that's where I was kind of looking, more hands make lighter work and then just being able to bring the community together, community together. I am a faith-based ministry, so that's where I kind of have some notes on my paper here that if the city is coming together more, I am more able to, kind of, we can shift the name of the event itself to showcase and highlight celebrating the community and kind of just the hundred and twentieth, twenty-fifth, twenty-five years, so just kind of that concept instead of that Hope Festival. But then I can kind of have a couple, a bigger tent or a booth area where I can bring in some of the resource providers that I'm already connected with within the neighboring communities and then just also bringing in any of the local resource providers as well as like a Hope tent. So, I do a lot of acronyms, so that's Housing Outreach Prevention and Educating, because I am a survivor of sex trafficking, but my heart is crisis. And so, I do eventually want to open crisis-level housing as my big kid goals. But my husband and I pastor a church for Free Guys United, but like I said, we do have some people involved that would want to help plan the event. But overall, it would be just a way to be able to spend some time as a community, just getting together in a safe, fun environment and just kind of the more the merrier. So, I have my contact information on the last page. And like I said, it was for the proposed grant amount, so I like to do things with low to like no cost if possible. So, that's where I know we can come together as a community, because I've planned some other community outreach events where I've been able to just give back and not have to charge for things on the smaller scales that we've done outside of, or in our church building and stuff. But with performers and different things like that, there's gonna be some money to, you know, have to pay out and stuff. So, we're gonna do some fundraising as Grace House Ministries between now and then and see what we can come up with. But if anyone's interested in being a part of the planning or being involved in any ways, that's kind of what we're doing. But it would be nice to come together as a community for a bigger thing. Because I'm learning I'm not a good advertiser. I haven't figured out that key thing for the Foley area yet. I've done online and flyers, but I'm noticing banners work, but that's where I might need support, I think, and the biggest is just getting the community to know what's going on. But I think that's all I got.
Have you reached out to the Quality of Life Foundation?
Um, I haven't talked to them. I've tried to, like, they've invited me and said I can be a part of their planning events and committees, because that's where I like to do things as well. But I haven't specifically reached out for, about this at all, because I figured this would just be a, my first invite and then just kind of get some teams scheduling meetings and stuff like that. And we'll probably use the Free Grace United Church as like a planning hub, so we can really get some stuff going and bring all the fun ideas together, so.
I encourage you to reach out to them.
Yeah, I will do that, so.
Including the Lions Club.
The Lions Club.
Okay.
Well, thank you for sharing and wanting to do something within the community, help celebrating one hundred and twenty-five years. I think the more the merrier. What, is there anything you need from us besides, I'm assuming, like, the, I don't think you're looking for an okay, per se, of to do something? I think if you want to have a celebration and, and have a community engagement event, great.
I know, at the scale that I always visualize, I'm like, it's gonna be the whole city that will turn out, so I'm always thinking of the risk and all the things that I gotta think of. So, I'm always like, okay, safety and security and then the park layout, but I'm like, the biggest things I might have to get permission for is if I bring in a, like a flatbed semi-trailer thing and keep it on the pavement for like lighting and sound and. But we have a, we have speakers and portable stage equipment and stuff at the church, so I was like, I don't know, I know there's noise ordinances, so I have to refresh themselves on that kind of stuff. But any of the bigger kind of projects, I figured, or those pieces, I would make sure that we're staying compliant. And I was like, if we're for sure done by ten, if we can do it earlier depending on, but that kind of thing, so.
Well, you have, you have four months essentially to continue on this. It sounds like you're, you have a call to action if anyone wants to help.
Yep.
Be a part of a committee and, and.
Yes.
Be a part of, of what you're trying to put together amongst you and some others. Make sure you leverage the city administration and the, the staff for any questions around ordinances, permits, you know, what you can, can't do at Holdridge Park. And if something needs to be brought forward to this council as, as far as amendments and such, we can, we can talk about it then.
Okay.
But yes, please do reach out to those two organizations.
Quality of Life Townships.
And I, I think you'll find support both monetarily and volunteer-wise.
Perfect, sounds good.
Thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
Discussion and consideration on annexation request of the Gilminton Township.
Um, I'll just elaborate. I, I got one call on this item and they just had some questions, but I did not receive any written comments as the letter indicated. So, I don't have anything else to provide for the public record. Just that we sent the notices and.
Sure.
You know, per the orderly annexation agreement process, so.
Has anyone on council received emails, phone calls, visits, letters?
Uh-uh.
Okay, so are we just motioning on adopting the resolution?
Yep, there's no public hearing required on this, because for the orderly annexation agreement, we held a number of hearings and meetings.
Yep.
Before that was adopted. So, this is, the agreement specifically states two out of the three, so Gilminton Township requested us, this resolution would accept it, which meets the requirements.
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion to adopt Resolution twenty-two-five dash twelve approving annexation for O A A.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? I will say this is a, a good direction for the city in moving forward as we continue to develop again. Something that hasn't happened in quite a while and excited to see what, what this does for, for our future. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, same sign, motion carries. Discussion on new septic system installed on the North property.
So, the reason this item is on there, because the one consideration Gilminton Township requested is that we give that furthest north property, which would be the furthest for us to go with this annexation or the extension. We give them time, they just installed the new septic. I would recommend we put a note in the file that they have till twenty forty-five, just like we did with Cotsmiths when we annexed that property. That's gonna be the last place we get to with this extension, so it might even be longer. But we just want to recognize that they did put that new septic in and we're not gonna make them connect immediately.
Sure, is that something we need to motion on?
Yeah, I would just motion if we can.
This is just a temporary, basically, hookup right now.
No, so the furthest, that house that's on the furthest north.
Okay.
Uh, right before the curb, they just installed a brand-new septic system last year, and I did confirm this with the county. So, the township just requested, we don't make them hook up until they've got some use out of their septic.
Put up to, okay, put up one step further to the lumberyard.
They have until twenty forty-five. They, they, we don't.
To go permanently with that?
Yep, to permanently. So, I recommend we do the same year, since we just did that one. And if it's longer, it's longer, you know, but we don't make them do anything until they've had a good life on that system.
And if, if something were to happen where they needed to replace it before the twenty years?
If we evaluate.
And we are out there?
Yep.
Then that's when we, so it's kind of whichever one happens first?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, and I, and I can, you know, draft up the, a simple agreement on that. I just wanted to have the council consider that, that was something that Gilminton Township requested of us too, and I think it's reasonable.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to allow for the recently installed septic system on the North property to have until twenty forty-five to hook up to city services?
Yeah.
I'll second the motion.
Motion been made and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Item number nine, twenty-two-five North Side Improvement Project Lead Service Line Replacement. We are gonna discuss an overview of the plans in our packets.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm gonna go off a little bit of script versus what was in the agenda, but I'm gonna first start with the resolution, so the next one. Resolution in your packet, looking for action tonight to, to approve the resolution for applying, the application for the PFA funding for the twenty-two-five lead service project. As you recall, about this time last year, we applied for the PPL application and IUP application for our twenty-two-five lead service project. We were awarded, awarded is a strong word, but, you know, granted that one point seven million for this project. Now, after through the design process and, and further evaluation of this, of the city's existing water service system, there, it went from seventy services that we had for that IUP application down to forty, forty-two that were eligible for that, that fund. So, so the resolution itself is, is part of the PFA funding application. With that, we will be requesting it be seven hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, not that one point seven, due to what we just, what I just discussed. So, as I, like I said, moving forward with the PFA application, this is part of that packet that needs to be submitted together, is this resolution, assigned resolution by the council.
Sure, so this is the official application?
Yes.
That you'll send for the grant dollars that'll help pay for the project?
Correct, yep.
Okay, and it went from seventy-two down to?
Seventy services that we initially thought would be eligible for that, that project, down to forty-two.
And after actually visiting and seeing and everything else, it's forty-two, adjust the payment, okay. I would consider adoption of Resolution twenty-two-five dash fourteen, applying to Minnesota Public Facilities for the grant.
Oh.
Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries.
All right, thank you. Now, back to the, the second motion, looking for approval of plans and specifications for the twenty-two-five lead service project and then also authorization to start advertising. In your packet, there is the, a pared-down version of our plans, not every, not all forty-two services are on this, in this packet. Randomly selected four of them to just include to show you, can I give you a sense of what we are trying to do with this project. This is gonna be replacing water services from the meter in the, meter in the house to the curb stop near the right-of-way. So, essentially, where our street project ends, this project will pick up and replace the rest that are, that have a galvanized slash lead service. So, with that, do you have any questions about this project or any more detail you want to go through with the plans?
So, everything from the meter inside the house, from the meter to. So everything from the meter inside the house, from the meter to the facilities, the homeowner is responsible for?
No, you, you mean like as far as like what's public versus private or?
You're going from the street to the meter, you said?
Yep, the curb stop that they're near the right of way.
From the meter that's inside the house. Because in my house, I have, I have a galvanized pipe.
So your interior plumbing, you mean? Yes, yeah, that's, that's not, that's not eligible for grant funding. It's only the water, the water service to the meter.
And that's part of the Northside Improvement Project?
No, 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 the Northside Improvement Project is, is taking care of the service from the main in the street to the curb stop near the right of way. And then this is a separate project, separate contractor, separate everything. There'll be some coordination with you obviously because they need to work together. But this is a project that'll, that'll take care of forty-two services from the right of way to the meter inside the house, wherever that's located.
That's under that grant program?
Yes, yep.
What, help refresh my memory, which part is the one where the homeowner has the decision to pay for a certain part of the project or have, or I should say hire somebody else?
That is the, as part of the Northside Project, that's for the sanitary service. Per city ordinances, if they have a defective service, they would need to have that service replaced, updated before that project's completed essentially. Either they can have that be done within the project or hire their own contractor to do themselves.
Thank you for the clarification. And you need us to?
So tonight we'll be looking for a motion to approve the plans and specs for the twenty twenty-five lead service project and then also authorize us to start advertising.
For bids? Advertising for bids?
Advertising for bids, yep. The plan then would be to get this into the paper for this weekend and then have a bid opening the twenty, the twenty-eighth, May twenty-eighth. So I, we can put, put the packet together so we get it to Sarah for the meeting on the third of June for approval.
I'll make a motion to approve Construction Services Agreement Forum, S E H.
Nope, that's, this one's for the plan approval, plan and specs approval.
Just the one that just says overview of plans.
Yeah, yeah, yep.
Alright, so we need a, okay, so I will make a motion to approve the plans.
For Northside Improvement. That'd be for the bid opening on the twenty-eighth, right?
Approved, we're looking to approve plans and specifications for the twenty twenty-five lead service project and then authorize advertising for bids.
Make a motion to approve plans of the twenty twenty-five lead service project and authorize advertisement for bids. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Alright, thank you. The last thing I have in the packet for, for our twenty twenty-five projects is our Construction Services Agreement for the Northside Improvements. This is the next phase, we've gone through kind of the preliminary design, went through then the design that brought us through advertising and worrying the project, now we're in the construction services side of this project. This dollar amount, the contract amount has been included in the overall project cost that we're talking about at the previous public hearings. So this is, shouldn't be needing any news to, to the next phase, I guess, we're going through. But essentially this, like I said, this construction agreement covers our construction services from project management to construction admin, construction staking, and then our RPR, full-time RPR on the field, day-to-day inspections, so. With that, I'm open to any questions you may have on our construction services agreement.
So you need a motion for your approval? Motion to approve the Construction Services Agreement from S E H for twenty twenty-five Northside Improvement Project. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to item number eleven, Department Reports. Jared, while you have it, is there anything else you would like to discuss? I mean, I'll, I'll go out of order here because I can.
Uh, yeah, a couple of things, as I mentioned, we had a bid opening on the twenty, twenty-eighth for the lead service project. You also are gonna be scheduling the kind of, I call it the next neighborhood informational meeting for the twentieth, the evening on twentieth as well, in this room, similar to the one we did after our design. That one, we'll be talking kind of about construction activity, but also then include some discussion about that private led ser, or not led service, sorry. Private sanitary sewer work and then kinda go through the process of how they can sign up for that, that process, so.
Okay, as, as it relates to whatever, or what to kick off construction, will, will that meeting include actions about, you know, parking? What weeks or dates certain streets will be closed to through traffic and such?
As far as weeks and dates of the exact time, you know, that's construction, so everything kind of is, is what it is for construction. But our, for our pre-construction meeting with the contractor will be on the fourteenth of, of May. So at that meeting, they're supposed to bring schedules for the completion of the project. So we'll have that to go off of at that meeting. Things aren't set in stone, but that's how they're gonna lay out their project. We should at least have an understanding of how they plan to phase the project and tackle, like you said, street per street operations, so.
And we, and this might be both you and Mark. Do we have things worked out with the businesses that will be affected by the streets as far as customers being able to park or employees being able to park?
Yeah.
Perfect. Don't overcomplicate it. Good, anything else, Jared?
I don't believe there's any, I don't think so. No, I think that, that should cover it.
Great, thanks. Let's go back then to the top here. We will go to Chief McMillan.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we'll start off first with the stat report for the month of April. We had three hundred and fifty-four calls, equipment violations were up and accidents were up from, we had zero the other month, so now we're back up to six. That's about normal. As you can see, gas drive-offs are now, have been at zero for the whole year. The reason for that is a lot of the gas stations, I believe all of them, I guess, I'm not quite sure, a hundred percent on Speedway, are all pay at the pump or you have to prepay, so that takes away from that. So I'll leave that line item there for the rest of this year, but then next year, if we still have zero for the whole year for this year, I'll take it off. Then the other thing to point out is city ordinances, we had seventeen in the month of April. A lot, most, all of those are like your nuisance complaints, your junky yards or expired vehicles. People have to have your vehicle, you may not drive it and you have it parked on your yard, it still has to have current tabs on it and it has to still be operable per city ordinance. But now I believe I hit most of those and now I'm going to start my focus on, we had the water, we had rain. We, now we have heat, so your grass is gonna grow. So people, reminder that people have to mow their grass is what I'm going to now be focusing on, the tall grass ordinances. Any questions on the stat report? Few things to point out, I'm, I'm working on the bike rodeo that is June fourteenth at Lyons Park. This week is prom week. Officer Cody Powish at the school has been busy with doing a lot of events with the kids and he is scheduled to work, cover that on Saturday. I believe it was a few weekends ago, Officer Dana went to the Spring Carnival at the First Presbyterian Church and it was a great turnout, way it sounded. We sold the twenty nineteen squad car at auction. Thank you to the Public Works Department for taking off the graphics, I appreciate that. The new body cameras and squad car cameras are, have been installed in the squad cars. There's just, we have for sure one, two actually, that's what I've been working on. Two of the squad cars are up and running, they are still working on one of them yet. We purchased new squad laptops for the squad cars, they will hopefully be in later this month. And the last day of school for the seniors is May twenty-third and that is their tractor day. So if you're driving around, you, you'll see lots of tractors and use caution. May twenty-ninth is the last day for everyone else. On the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth are the days that we have been contacted to assist with crossing the kids across the highway going to their events. So you'll see more kids going out and about. The other thing I have is we had the application open for the part-time officers, I got zero. So I will be posting it again, hopefully tomorrow, I, if everything goes right and I don't get pulled away, I will be posting it again until the deadline of June sixteenth. I'm hoping with the debt, big of a timeframe that we get, I mean, there's kids that should be graduating the colleges and getting their post license. So hopefully we will get some from that, so. Other than that, that is all I have unless you have something for me.
I'd like to see the T Z D hours up there, Chief, thank you.
Yes, yep, the officers now for the months of May through September, there's D W I enforcement and it is also the, that's the hundred, hundredth deadliest days and so that focuses on speed. So we have seventeen hours of speed enforcement and I forget how many D W I enforcement hours we got, so. And we do have, Officer Dana got also certified to be able to do T Z D hours too. So if we have another officer able to assist with that.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks.
Ships are covered?
Yep, yep, we only had one gap on Easter, but it all worked out, so.
Alright, we'll move on to our Paving Bus, Public Works and Fire.
Me again. So in your packet, I have information, I was contacted by the family of Ted Dingman. As you know, Ted served the city for many years as police apartment, police chief and fire. They, this, they wanna do a memorial bench for Ted. This is up at Rice P D. They did it for Bear up there when he passed away, who was their chief for many years. They were wondering if they could do, you know, obviously talked about a few locations. They would like to do it around this building where he was, office was. I think the front, you know, there's talk back here, I don't think that's a good idea, it's not gonna get seen, you don't want people back there.
I think it'd look real nice right up front.
Yeah, they're gonna cover all expenses, you know, it'd be a permanent. I don't think it'd be getting moved in the winter months, is my understanding. I, this is a three foot, they're probably gonna go a four foot. But something very similar to this and I talked to one of the boys just the other day. Actually today again, and they still are, only asked, they asked about if they, you know, where we're at with it, so.
Any comments or?
I'm, I'm all for it. It should go, it should go out in front.
Hundred percent.
We'd put it in the bump in, you know, the, there so it's not taking up the sidewalk up on the other.
It'll be, I'm trying to remember, we have a slightly slanted, right, so we wanna, I mean, just wanna make sure it's on a flat.
We talked about that, if it's gonna be custom made, can they make one leg a little longer or? You know, it's sure looking, I think it's gonna look fine with the slanted building. The bricks on the building go straight, so, yeah, they're not slanted.
Ideal, but you got your handicap deal right there. If you're looking at the bump in coming in, is that where you're looking at?
Straight out these windows here, the office windows.
Okay, okay, so you're not looking at the entrance part.
Somewhere straight out the, that's my, I mean, I'm, we're open to, there's no right or wrong here.
That's a good spot.
I just, it should be somewhere close by this.
I would, I mean, my only comment would just be I'd just make sure that it's
Whatever works with the rest.
Bench is level and, and not actually conforming to whatever angle it's at.
Put it to the building, not to the ground. Do you want a motion? I will let the family know tomorrow then, go from there. Other than that, I don't know, I have nothing specific, I guess, unless there's any question, not much going on.
No news is good news, I'll take it. Great, Sarah.
Okay, I do have one item I, I wanna talk through with the council. We are working on the bonding process for the Northside Project. And so we discussed a fifteen and a twenty-year option and I just, oh, must have been open. I just wanna make sure, oh, here we go, that we can make that decision next month because they're gonna need to know when we, we set for the bond sale on, in June. So just roughly, I got some schedules run. Fifteen-year financing, total principal and interest over the course of fifteen years, about six point eight million. The average net tax levy, so this is what we have to certify to the property taxes every year is about a hundred and forty-nine thousand. And then the special assessment interest rate would be about four point eight five. Twenty-year, as you can see, total principal and interest increases. So, but the average net tax levy obviously goes down, but interest rate's a little higher. And we may be able to improve upon that. What we have seen historically, when we issue bonds in July, it, that, there's kind of always a little dip. It's been going on for many years, so we're hoping that, I'm not thinking anything crazy, but we're hoping maybe a slight tick because I think there's just, it's a time of year that a lot of projects are issued and, and they're looking for, you know, city debt to bid on and so forth. But the one thing I wanted to bring to your attention is it's gonna cost the city about seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars more to do the longer term. The reason we're looking at the longer term though is because of some of those assessments. We also have to be mindful that we have property owners that have assessable portions and need to pay those assessments and we wanna make sure they can manage that as well. The good news, we just got some updates on the assessments and they look, they're lower than the estimates, the initial ones, which is good. So, but I would like to just go through and check those. We had run some annual, annual payments for those different property owners. I'd like to check those new payments to what we had given them before for a twenty-year to see how close we are. But otherwise, I just need to get some feedback from the council. Are you leaning one way or another? Or do you wanna get some feedback from the residents first? I am not sure, it's ultimately the council's decision on what we structure this debt to look like. But I think it's important to recognize the different variables.
I think that you bring up a good point. We wanna make it affordable, right? It's a project that has to happen. We know it's something that we've been pushing off for quite some time. But we wanna make sure that, we don't know what the future holds. We don't know what's gonna happen with the county building project, which is going to add, right, an assessment or, or increase taxes. You know, we, we have this and, and we know that at some point down the road, sooner rather than later, there's gonna be a water project. And so as much as I'd hate to pay more interest than we need to, I, I lean towards the twenty-year for the simple fact that we have a lot going on you know, outside of our control that we have to account for. And so if we can soften the, the payment a little bit and stretch it out, it's not a half-bad idea.
I would like to see some community feedback too on this issue. I think it'd be advantageous to us to get some other input.
Well, like I said, I'd like to have Monica rerun those numbers with these updated assessment amounts, just to see how they compare. But I just, and that's helpful, just to know that you recognize that we also need to consider what those, the property owners have to pay as well. So that's important too. But like I said, we'll have to make that decision when we go for the bond sale. So that'll be in June.
And I think again, to your point, running the numbers, finding out what, what is the, maybe we'll call it the average difference in the, in the assessment from the fifteen year to the twenty year. Yeah, and I think again, again, to your point, running the numbers, finding out what, what is the, maybe we'll call it the average difference in the, in the assessment from the 15-year to the 20-year.
Yep.
Um, and, uh, Gary, to your point, you know, certainly any feedback.
Anything that we're doing for them, they should know.
And I, and I will, uh, I will comment that feedback does not need to be only here. Our numbers and our emails, our, our home addresses are, are posted and available to the public, I, I don't think, um, you know, please reach out. Uh, honestly, I'd, I'd prefer you just phone call. So, will there be opportunity with some of the, uh, uh, community engagement for the project? Will there be opportunity or timing to be able to allow for discussion or comment or feedback from, from those that come to that meeting? Or is that timing not match up?
It'll be tight, because we have to have the bond sale scheduled for the, we order the sale on the 3rd, so I'll check with the con, bonding council.
And when?
Yeah, but I think we could also, we could put something in the, um, maybe the notice or maybe we sent out.
The letter that we sent out for that, I think, if you wanna have a paragraph about, probably feedback about your, your percentage of the
Yeah, I think that, I think that'd be good, to include. Yeah, any, any details that we can provide in that notice, that way they can come prepared with thoughts or comments around what they would like to see one way or the other.
We will see staff on.
Yeah, and, and I'm hoping, like I said, we, we might see a little improvement on, on interest rate.
Right.
So the standard is, you know, whatever the city finances, you, you basically round that up, and that's what the assessable, you know, charges. Um, but if we can improve that a little bit, um, and then once we rerun those numbers and take a look, sometimes we can hone that in even more. Um, historically, we've had enough cash on hand, you know, so if we do have any delinquencies or, or things like that, the city's been able to handle that. Um, but you have to be careful with it, because the city has to still make the payment. So if people don't pay their assessments, you know, they still have to cover that, cause we backed the taxpayers on that, um, debt, so. We could see, also I might have more information when we come next month on what's going on with interest. That's all, kind of all I needed for now, I just wanted to get some feedback.
Sure. Do you have in, in additional, any additional items you wanted to, uh?
We have a couple of things on the workshop, but, um, other than that, it's just been very busy, but good busy. You know, projects are good thing, you know, we're doing the Northside Project, so lots of stuff coming in with that, but a lot of development inquiries, obviously the annexation, so good stuff, positive stuff um, for the community, but, you know, we'll have audit report next month too, so that's in the works. Um, but other than that, it's kinda, yeah, getting ready for the pool, getting ready for all the busy summer things, so.
Right, is it too early to start discussing, uh, budget planning meetings?
So budget meetings, um, we typically schedule the workshop for August. Um, we probably will wanna schedule a session, maybe a standalone session right before that, I have the rate studies scheduled to come in right before we do the budget workshop. If you'd like some additional, um, sessions, like on specifics, you know, that we need to dig into deeper, just let me know and we would get those, we'd probably look at July for those. But I don't think Mark and I and Katie will get, we usually don't get much for budget ready till June, it takes, it's busy this time of year, so.
Okay.
We won't have rough numbers till probably late June.
Alright. Anything for Sarah? Uh, we have old business. Nothing there, any, think we're old, okay, uh, new business?
Mr. Mayor, I just have a few kudos to go out to. Um, uh, the community just finished up the, uh, we did 78 kids for youth firearms. Uh, again, I thank the, uh, school board for letting us use the high school. Few people helped out, Jesse Brinell from Public Works, he's been helping us now for, I believe, about seven years, a big thank you to him. Along with Chief Pavinfus, along with, with Chris Heron, Adam Foss, and Craig Rudolph from the Fire Department, they all came. And when we have these classes, they do a first aid class for the kids, and it's very much appreciated, so, thank you.
And I wanna say kindness day, all the churches here in town encourage the kids, and I can tell you, at least at the nursing home, the 20 kids that came there were amazing, they washed windows, they filled planter boxes, they, they really, and they were really neat kids, and I've heard that from more than one person.
Anything else, new business? Alright, well then, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries, meeting is adjourned. I, at this time, we are going to transition into our workshop session. This is a, uh, publicly viewable meeting, it is our opportunity as council to discuss, uh, topics and is a working meeting. Uh, there will be unfortunately no time for comments during, uh, the